Good evening, I call to order this April 18th meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council, and I'll ask the City Secretary to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Light, Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Bestie.
Here.
Councilmember Montgomery.
Here.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Thank you very much, and would you join the City Council in me in a moment of silence? Thank you, and would you join the City Council in me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance. We are the United States of America and the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, our Sergeant at Arms and Eyes Lieutenant Mike Hardwell, Lieutenant, thank you for being with us tonight. May we have the first resolution?
Resolution honoring Aretha Hairston Smith's humanitarian work with sarcoidosis awareness. Whereas, Aretha Hairston Smith became the wife of Terry Smith Jr. on May 4th, 2002. She has three children, Devon Senior, Patrice, and Dewan. She and Terry are the proud grandparents of three grandsons, Alan, Dylan, and Devon Junior. And whereas, Aretha completed an associate's degree in early childhood education from Forsyth Technical Community College in 1992. And whereas, in 1997, Aretha became an employee of the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School System as a teacher assistant and is currently an administrative assistant. And whereas, since 1976, Mrs. Hairston Smith has been a member of St. Andrews United Methodist Church located in Winston-Salem, where she has been an active faithful member of the choir, youth group, pastor parish committee, and the usher board. And whereas, for the last eight years, Aretha has been a tireless volunteer champion for Samaritan Ministries, feeding the homeless and assisting those who are in transition. In addition, she is a mentor to young ladies ages 11 to 13 years old who attend middle school. And whereas, sarcoidosis is a chronic condition whose unknown cause is characterized by enlargement of lymph nodes in the multiple body parts and widespread appearance of granulomas or large masses of tissues. And whereas, Aretha was diagnosed with sarcoidosis in December 2007, although there is no support group in Winston-Salem, she has been a member of the Mount Sinai Sarcoidosis Support Group, Mount Sinai Hospital in New York for five years, and a member of the Foundation of Sarcoidosis Research located in Chicago, Illinois for three years. Whereas, in 2015, Aretha appeared on The Today Show in New York to raise awareness. During the week of April 5th, 2016, Aretha along with a group of sarcoidosis survivors appeared again on The Today Show and Good Morning America to keep sarcoidosis awareness on the consciousness of the public's mind. In addition, Aretha attended a conference in Capitol Hill in February to learn more about this rare disease. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and City Council of the City of Winston-Salem do hereby recognize Aretha Hairston Smith for her dedicated and continued battle in bringing sarcoidosis awareness to the forefront of her community and the City of Winston-Salem.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second, motion second, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed note, that is unanimous, and Councilmember Taylor, I believe is going to present this award.
Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to thank you for helping me to recognize Ms. Hairston Smith for her work in this community. I think we would all agree that the race isn't always given to the swift, nor the battle to the strong, but to the one that endures to the end. Mrs. Hairston Smith, we thank you for your endurance, bringing awareness to this issue. We thank you for enduring, but enduring through adversity. I think your work completely embodies the essence of what it means to be a citizen of this great city. So on behalf of the Mayor and Winston-Salem City Council, we thank you for your efforts.
Good evening, I would just like to thank you all for this award. City Councilmember James Taylor Senior, Junior, and also, I would like to thank my family and foremost, God. If it wasn't for God, I wouldn't be here today. His never-ending grace and mercy speaks within itself. I would like to thank my family, my coworkers who are here, and my other friends as well. Sarcoidosis, I have been battling with for years, but as you see, I look good and I feel good. I'm gonna just continue to pray for those who are survivors of sarcoidosis. I will continue to be in the research group because there is no cure, but one day we will have a cure for sarcoidosis. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next resolution, please.
Resolution recognizing Forsyth County Sunday School Union's inaugural golf tournament. Whereas, Forsyth County Sunday School Union was founded in 1900 by a dedicated group of Baptist ministers. And whereas, that group focused on religious education and training for its various congregations. And whereas, over the past 15 years, the Forsyth County Sunday School Union has contributed over $20,000 to support scholarships for graduating seniors entering institutions of higher education. And whereas, the union also sponsors an annual oratorical contest for all youth age groups to enhance their academic, public, speaking, and organizational skills. And whereas, the Forsyth County Sunday School Union will host its inaugural golf tournament at the historic Winston Lake Golf Course on April 23rd, 2016. Whereas, proceeds from this event will assist the Forsyth County Sunday School Union in expanding its capacity to contribute to the scholarly excellence of the group of well-deserving youth. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and City Council of the City of Winston-Salem supports the Forsyth County Sunday School Union in its efforts to promote academic excellence for the youth of Winston-Salem, North Carolina. Be it further resolved that the April 23rd, 2016 will be declared Forsyth County Sunday School Union Day in Winston-Salem.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion second, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed note, that is unanimous, Councilmember Adams is going to present this. I believe Reverend Velma McLeod and perhaps others are here.
As we know, the City of Winston-Salem, thank you so much for what you're doing for our youth. We can never do enough for them. But to decide since 1900 to have been dedicated and working with young people when it comes to not just Sunday School lessons, but life lessons, and particularly in academia. So on behalf of the Winston-Salem City Council and the citizens of Winston-Salem, we thank you for what you're doing in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you so much on behalf of Forsyth County Sunday School Union. We do appreciate your support as we endeavor to continue to raise our young people to the academic excellence that they can receive. We support them, we thank you for your prayers, and we thank you for this proclamation.
Thank you.
We also encourage you to come and support our golf tournament, April 23rd.
For Mayor Lawrence and the City Council members, I would like to say thank you for this proclamation. And that only tells us that you are supporting the Forsyth County Sunday School Union, and we truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to say to Ms. Velma before she got out there, just to say, she kept me together while I was in Israel, she kept me straight while we were there, and so just want to say thank you for that, for keeping me straight.
Thank you. Next resolution, please.
Resolution honoring the 2016 City of Winston-Salem University graduates.
We have the graduates here on the first couple of rows in the bright blue shirts there, so as we call your name out, would you please stand?
Whereas, there are 19 city residents who have successfully completed City of Winston-Salem University. Edward Allen, Daniel B. Anthony, Richard J. Baruchy, Carol Brooks-Fonville, LaShonda Cheeks, Amy Easter, Carmina R. Eater, Elizabeth B. Phelps, Margaret Phelps, Diane C. Fitzhugh, Amy Foster, Lee Gaskins Junior, Elena Geisbrecht, Gary W. Gilbert, Mary Ann Heitz, Pamela S. Mitchell, Hope Ann Snyder Walsh, Leslie Oldham Windbusch, and James O. Young Junior. And whereas, the 11-week coursework has included over 30 hours covering 17 city departments and divisions, having completed a ride-along with either the Winston-Salem Fire Department or the Winston-Salem Police Department, attended at least one city council or committee meeting, toured either the Rock Quarry, Elledge Wastewater Treatment Plant, Waste Management's Material Recovery Center, or City Link, and completed a budget project. Whereas, LaShonda Cheeks, Carmina Eater, Amy Foster, Elena Geisbrecht, Pamela Mitchell, and Hope Ann Snyder Walsh will earn continuing education units from Winston-Salem State University based on their coursework. And whereas, the dedication of all 19 graduates has resulted in a better understanding and appreciation of city government and has given them the resources to better serve their communities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and Winston-Salem City Council hereby approve honoring the aforementioned 2016 City of Winston-Salem University graduates and wish them much success in their future as community leaders.
Is there a motion?
Some.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed note, that is unanimous, so congratulations to each one of you, and thank you. All right, tonight's agenda of the City Council is comprised of two parts, the consent agenda and the general agenda, and it's always a practice of this council to take the consent agenda as the first order of business. Items on this agenda have been unanimously recommended by committee of the City Council or are being submitted in accordance with established city procedure. There will be no discussion of the items on this agenda unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered individually. Items not removed from the consent agenda will be enacted with one motion. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. and again Wednesday at 9:00 p.m. Of course, members of the public can always get copies of our agenda as well as videos of our previous meetings by going to the city's website at www.cityofws.org and just watch, click on the "Watch Meetings Online" option. Councilmembers, are there any items you wish to have pulled?
C-7 and C-15.
If there's none other, I move for approval of ballot.
Second.
Motion second on the ballot, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed note, that is unanimous. Councilmember Clark, before we come to the first, Councilmember Burke had a mention on one of the items on consent that we've already passed. Councilmember Burke.
Yes, Mayor members of the council, this is a very historical time in our city, and I'm very pleased on this evening that we have an opportunity to see something taking place that's going to be official for the City of Winston-Salem. We have women who are outstanding leaders in this community. For about 13 years, we have been recognizing them and saying thank you to them for what they do to make this city a better place for all of us. It's different now because the City of Winston-Salem, the city elected officials sitting here, you have made this history by voting that we will have a group of women to look at agendas that will address needs for women. So at this time, Mayor members of the council, I would like for Ms. Driver to introduce them. But before she introduces them, I want to tell you, we do have, for the first time, we've had chair honorary chairs, but this is for the first time, the official honorary chair for this occasion is Ms. Flo.
Right.
And she, this is just wonderful, Ms. Flo, all right, and you can introduce now, Ms. Driver.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pretten, members of the council.
Good evening.
The Outstanding Women Leaders Program was established in 2003 by Mayor Pretten Burke, and it has recognized many women leaders that have made significant contributions to our community. And this year, we are continuing that tradition by honoring and recognizing many, many more women, some of which are here tonight and will, I'll recognize shortly. The official program will be at the historic Brookstone Inn April 28th at 6:00 p.m., but we did want to recognize those that are here tonight in front of council. So as I read your name, if you'll just stand up, excuse me. So as Mayor Pretten Burke mentioned, Roger and Flo is a philanthropist, philanthropist, it's hard for me to say, and she is the first official honorary chair. Tawana Wellman-Robuck, Experiment and Self-Reliance Executive Director. Veronica Black, former senior vice president, Wachovia Corporation. Seda Samara, Ph.D., Assistant Professor at Wake Forest School of Medicine. Phyllis Walker, retired Forsyth County Sheriff Deputy. Judy Tharp, President/CEO of Piedmont Advantage Credit Union. Sabrina Fraser-Hinton, operator of North Point Academy. Antoinette Weary Dunn, administrator of Little Red Schoolhouse Daycare and Waltown Kids R.S. Daycare, and property manager of Weary, Inc. Doris Harrell, retired college and secondary teacher. Marty Tenille, retired pediatrician and co-founder of Hope Help Our People Eat. Susan Morris, Arts Council Director of Community Resource Development. And Lida Hayes Calvert, owner of SNL Painting and Decorating. So would any of you ladies like to say anything? Okay.
Did you forget something?
Okay. First of all, I would, come up.
Ms. Hayes, if you'd, Ms. Hayes Calvert, if you'd come up, please. Please state your name and address for the record, please, Ms. Hayes Calvert.
Lida Hayes Calvert Hayes, 4417 Bent Tree Farm Road, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27106. And I would just like to be here to thank Mrs. Burke, who is a hero to women in Winston-Salem and always has been. And I want to thank her for the opportunity that she has given each of the women here. I also want to thank you, who is a hero also, and brings so much to Winston-Salem. So for all the women that have been given this honor, I want to tell the council that we appreciate it greatly, and we've come a long ways, baby.
Thank you. Roddy, would you like to say? Thank you. Thank you all very much, and thank you, Councilmember.
Mayor, may I just say this? I have a passion, a great love for this wonderful city. And I tell people, and it's in the minutes, we have some of the smartest people in the City of Winston-Salem, and we have some of the giving, most giving of themselves, people in the City of Winston-Salem. And this is something that we will treasure for honorary chair who took on the first, the responsibility, a very strong consultant for women, and please use her resources because she can help us as women move further. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Burke. Item C-7.
Item C-7. Consideration of items relating to permanent financing for the development of rental housing recommended by the Finance Committee and the Community Development Housing and General Government Committee. A, resolution authorizing permanent financing for development of 50 units of rental housing known as Emmanuel Retirement Village located in the East Ward. And B, ordinance amending the project budget ordinance for the City of Winston-Salem for the fiscal year 2015, 2016.
Councilmember Clark.
Yeah, I just want to make a few comments here. This was approved unanimously at the Finance Committee, and I will be supporting it tonight. I do want to say, I was impressed by the group, and I don't see any of the folks here tonight unless I'm...
There are a couple out there.
Are there a few out there? Okay. Big crowds, kind of hard to see everybody. I felt like they had done their homework. I had a number of fairly specific questions to ask them, and I felt like they had done their homework as far as examining some of the issues that were involved here. My comment, or my reason for pulling it tonight, I want to be sure that the staff, that we do our commitment as far as assisting in the stewardship of this, contract administration. There were a few concerns I had, one was the fact it was not being competitively bid. I did get a satisfactory answer for that, but I do think our staff should be sure that we look at the contracts, be sure everything's done. I know there's some grading issues on the property, be sure those are looked at carefully, et cetera, et cetera. But I recognize the challenges with development in certain parts of town, and I support the city's efforts here, and was particularly impressed with the folks that have been working on it, and I feel like they have got skin in the game, both emotionally and financially, and with that, I'll move approval.
Second, motion second, any discussion? Councilmember Adams.
Yes, just want to say again, I want to congratulate the organization, the Eugene CDC, the Atkins CDC, Emmanuel Baptist Church members, and all of the people, the developers, and Mr. Watson and all of them, for working so diligently and sticking to your dream for the past 11 years, maybe not getting there as quickly as you would have liked to, but you kept, you know, you were determined, and you didn't let it deter you. As Councilmember Clark said, you know, when we talk about assisted living housing and retirement housing here in the City of Winston-Salem, the data from the demographics and the Census Bureau, it tells us that, yes, the City of Winston is aging, we're becoming a majority of boomers over 60 years old. And as I said earlier, when people get older, sometimes we don't want to live in those big houses with all of the lawn and all of the upkeep that goes with it, and maybe it's even upstairs or something, but you want to be somewhere in your community where you feel safe and secure and there's a quality of life, and you can live out those days with the surroundings of those people that care and love you. So again, I just want to thank the council and the committee for voting for this. Again, it just places a much-needed service of housing in the east Winston neighborhood that it has never really been there, like it will be after the placement of this building. So congratulations on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Montgomery?
Yes, again, just like to thank Councilmember Clark and other members of the council in terms of getting us where we are, and thank staff for continuing to work with Eugene and the rest of the community and being able to get us to a place of something that we could work and present. When we look at the location of this in Old Greensboro Road Community and off of Barbara Jane Road, I think we're going to see a great investment in the neighborhood and community. We already have the opportunity of investment at the intersection of Barbara Jane and Old Greensboro Road through the Ruka Program, and have seen several of the property owners in that area apply for funding for that, and so I think we're seeing the investment in parts of our community that we would like to see it, and so I believe that the neighborhood and community, and those who will be living in this facility are going to be greatly benefited by this service that we're doing tonight. And so again, to Eugene and to the rest of those partners who helped them to make this move forward, we say thank you.
Councilmember Burke.
Mayor members of the, sitting here, most of the members on the committee are up in the room up there. And I did have a chance to greet them earlier. Since this is partly in the northeast part, we, in the northeast part, we appreciate, and I say again that they did, I agree with you, worked very hard, and this is a positive project, Mayor members of the council.
Very good. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed note, that is unanimous, thank you. Item C-15.
Item C-15. Resolution expressing a concern regarding inadequately considered provisions and consequences of House Bill 2 and calling for a review and reconsideration of the legislation recommended by the Community Development Housing and General Government Committee.
Councilmember Clark, you asked for this to be pulled, but I think you want to make a comment.
I'll make a comment. The resolution I did not feel comfortable voting for, but I have written a letter to our representatives in Raleigh, and I'd like to read that into the record after I'm finished.
Councilmember Bestie, you brought this resolution forward, would you like to make a comment, or you want us to go forward?
I will move approval.
Second. Motion second, discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed note? Excuse me, that's, pass this six in favor, one opposed, Councilmember Clark voting in the negative. I'd recognize Councilmember Clark now, if you wanted to read your record.
Thank you, and I will try to do this in less than five minutes. As the only Republican up here, I felt more comfortable writing from the heart to my folks in Raleigh, expressing my concerns about what's going on as opposed to the resolution. I did have concerns with it, but I won't go over those tonight. I did address each letter individually, but I'll, to each person individually, but I'll just read the letter, and for any folks of the press or anybody that wants a copy, I do have it here, copies here as well. Anyway, "The recent actions by the City of Charlotte and the State of North Carolina have thrust the state into the national spotlight concerning sexual orientation and transgender issues. Winston-Salem City Council will be voting this week on a resolution related to House Bill 2. I will not be supporting that resolution, but would rather communicate my concerns on the recent legislation directly to the members of the Forsyth County delegation. As someone who has served on the City Council for 15 years, I understand the difficulty of balancing conflicting interests while consolidating them into a workable solution. I share your concerns about the recently passed Charlotte ordinance specifically to the issue of male genitalia in female locker rooms. At the same time, I recognize the difficulty a transgender person would have in navigating a very private dilemma. The provision of a third bathroom seems part of the solution, but no one seems to have thought of this. We must as a state develop policies that protect civil rights of all persons while equally protecting the privacy rights of all as well. Concerning House Bill 2, I would like to take a moment to touch briefly on two specific areas addressed in House Bill 2 that I believe warrant further consideration. One area, if not addressed, has the potential to thrust the city into a potential conflict with the guidance issued by the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission and the federal regulators that enforce such. The other area addresses the elimination of the rights of citizens alleging employment discrimination to pursue a common law claim for wrongful termination based upon certain protective categories. Each section is discussed below in more detail. Based upon Section 3.1, the personnel policies of local governments are exempt from the provisions of House Bill 2 barring local governments from adopting regulations and ordinances prohibiting discriminating practices in employment. However, this exemption is qualified by the phrase, quote, "that are not otherwise in conflict with state law," end of quote. This qualification has the potential to place the city's employment practices in conflict with the guidance issued by EEOC that interprets the term sex to provide certain protections to employees based upon sexual orientation and gender identity. The aforementioned provision may cause the city to choose between avoiding an EEOC charge, federal enforcement efforts, and litigation, and complying with state law. I would appreciate the legislature considering an amendment to House Bill 2 that clearly allows local governments to build to completely, to comply fully with the guidance issued by EEOC as it relates to its employees without running the risk of violating state law. The governor has recently issued an executive order that attempts to address this issue. I do believe, however, that legislative action is needed to clarify, to clearly give cities the ability to comply fully with both state and federal employment laws. The second area relates to the elimination of rights of citizens alleging employment discrimination to file in state court as a common law cause of action for wrongful discharge based upon race, sex, religion, color, national origin, age, or handicap. It just seems fair that if a state law provides certain employee protections, an employee should be able to pursue a claim based upon these protections in state court. I would recommend that the legislature consider an amendment to House Bill 2 restoring this right. I ask that you all, I ask you all to work diligently and swiftly to develop solutions that balance all these issues. This will not be easy, but it must be done, and done quickly. Thank you for your time and attention, yours truly, Robert Clark.
Thank you, Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Taylor had a comment?
I just want to briefly say, I agree with all the comments that were made here today. I just want to outline that nothing in this resolution mentions bathrooms or locker rooms. It just clearly outlines some things that we want to see Raleigh change. I just want to state that for the media. I mean, this isn't about bathrooms. Please take the time to read the resolution, and I'm happy to support it with my vote.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Councilmember Burke.
I agree with Councilmember Taylor, and since we have quite a few people here, it is time for you to make sure you get yourselves involved in government. Those folks in Raleigh feel that they can do just about anything they want to do. They forget that they are there to serve people, and until you stand up and tell them that they are to serve you and to serve you fair, what they want to do is to set this country back, and if we allow them to do it, it will happen. And I want you to be very, very strong, because the years that we spent on this council, different council people pushing forward for the rights and the fairness for all people, just a few minutes ago, we talked about women being discriminated. We pushed forward with the MWBE. We also talk about people, and when we talk about people, we forget that all of us are human. So you watch those people in Raleigh, and you also watch those in Washington. Don't stay home, go out and show them that you're thinking, and you can change. you're thinking, and you can change things when people are unfair and unkind to you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Bessie?
Happy to wait till Councilmember, Councilmember and Mayor Pro Tim Burke has gotten her good share of applause there. That's a good statement. I just want to address one question, and that is, you know, why many of us thought it was important for Winston-Salem to address this matter, Winston-Salem specifically. We have a reputation for not acting hastily or lightly or on every issue that comes along. As a result, you know, when cautious and reflective Winston-Salem feels obliged to speak, it can matter more to many thoughtful listeners than resolutions from jurisdictions that may be faster to issue pronouncements on many more matters of current debate. And we have also built a new reputation as a welcoming and diverse community, and that reputation is important to our future. We need to let our citizens know that they are still all a welcome part of our community, and let people in businesses around the country know that they are still welcome to come to our city and be a part of creating jobs and opportunity and building community here. And then finally, there are some matters which citizens of good conscience feel an obligation to speak on. We don't want to have to explain to children or grandchildren decades from now about why our city was silent in the face of efforts to turn back pages of the history books to an era when discrimination was treated as acceptable, and most public officials seem to be afraid to speak out. We're not afraid, and we have spoken out.
Thank you, Councilmember Burke. The council will now consider the general agenda, which is comprised of the following items: a public hearing confirming the assessment role, an item relating to housing and community development program, an item authorizing the transfer of the Continuum of Care Homelessness Grant, an item relating to the city council's meeting schedule, as well as the public comment period. The assessment for demolition of housing is listed for a public hearing. When this public hearing is called, persons in council chamber will be given an opportunity to speak. If no one wishes to speak, the public hearing will be closed, and the city council will consider the item. Mr. Johnson, may we have the first item?
Item G-1, public hearing on resolution confirming assessment role for demolition of housing unfit for human habitation.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in council chamber who wishes to be heard on this proposed assessment role? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and...
You have a pen?
Yes, sir. If you come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Name is George Richardson. I live at 2505 Lewis Street, and the subject property is 4640 Indiana Avenue. It's Miss Adams' area. I tried to get in touch with Miss Adams a couple of times, and I wasn't able to get any response back from Miss Adams. I had a property at 4640, and I was in contact with Mr. Richard Brooks, and I had spoken with Bruce Bailiff. And it had came before the board before, and I had a permit, a city permit, to remodel the house. So I guess they considered that it was a blight. It was a dilapidated house, but I had a permit to remodel the house. I was in the footing phase, had passed the footing phase, and I had spoken with Mr. Bailiff in the office, because as I tried to reach out to him, no one ever got to me, so I had to go down to the office. And as I was talking to him, he was telling me to basically put the plan together, which I was trying to get that and put it together. I didn't think that I needed it, since I had a permit, and the plan is on file with the city. And in the midst of talking with him and getting that together, they demolished the house. So they didn't tell me when they was going to demolish it, didn't give me any time to get my belongings out. And when you demolish the house, you didn't just demolish the house, you demolished the vision. You basically demolished my child's future also with that home. And then I get this bill telling me that the price is going to be $3,300. And basically, you're going to take that, if, and basically turn it into a loan if I can't pay it all upfront. And what kind of surprised me was the fact that you could offer me assistance to pay for the demolition of the house, but you didn't tell me about a plan that you could give me funding to maybe fix the house. I'm an investor owner, so after you demolished the home, you basically figuratively took the trash and going to put it on as a lien onto my other properties. So now you're basically going to spread this blighted house, and basically, almost like, I mean, it's, I feel disenfranchised, because I had a permit, and that I was remodeling the home. And I'm listening to you talk about things about the fairness and, you know, the good things that you have done for other folks, but I feel like you really, it's almost like cruel what was done. Didn't tell me at all, as I'm shaking Mr. Bruce Bailiff's hands, ain't tell me that, hey, man, we're going to knock it down next week. Get your, get your belongings out. Ain't telling me nothing. I didn't know, I don't know what day you knocked it down. I just go, as I'm getting ready to deliver brick and block over there, and it's gone. And my daughter says, Dad, what a house. Some mean people down there. That's all I can say. And it's gone, and then you're going to offer me a loan to basically pay for the demolition of my home, but you're not going to mention one time that you have an assistance program for investor owners or owner occupiers that's part of the legacy program? I feel that I was indirectly being with the legacy program by trying to revitalize, rehabilitate the property. So now it's gone. So now it's a financial hardship on me, because now, not only do I have to get this money together to try to pay you, I have to, I'll start and try to redevelop this home now. And I mean, I feel that I don't owe you at all. So as I tried to reach out to Mr. Brooks, and I tried to reach out to Mr. Bruce Bailiff, who I know are the people that are supposed to be in charge of that, I don't know what to do now. Maybe the Department of Justice or civil rights attorney, because I feel like I don't owe you. I feel you owe me.
So Mr. Richardson, I understand that you're asking the city to forgive this particular assessment on this demolition.
Exactly.
All right. And I'm just going to correct one thing I believe, and correct me, that city attorney, the lien would only be on this particular lot as opposed to any other properties that Mr. Richardson would own?
Actually, it's a primary lien on this particular lot and a secondary lien on any other property owned by Mr. Richardson.
Okay. Council, if you would like to deal with the other ones tonight, and to hold this one for discussion, we can discuss it. Maybe we can provide some additional information, Mr. Richardson, and come back at a later time, and the city can deal with it, if that's okay with you.
No problem.
All right. So I would entertain a motion then to proceed with the Exhibit A with removing item 4640 Indiana Avenue.
So moved.
Second. And Mr. Garrity?
Mayor, I would suggest we send that one house, the one item, back to committee. That way, staff can present a report of all the facts and issues.
Yeah.
Well, I was going to ask for the same thing.
The same thing going back. All right. So the motion would be to move forward with Exhibit A and actually refer 4640 Indiana back to the committee. All right. Is there a motion in that regard?
So moved.
There's a second. Thank you. All right. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, that's unanimous. Thank you. And Mr. Richardson, we'll make sure you know when that's going back to the committee.
Okay.
Okay, item two.
Item G-2, resolution approving the fiscal year 2017 Housing and Community Development Program and authorizing submission of the 2016-2017 Annual Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Finance recommended this item with three in favor, none opposed, and one excused.
Councilmembers, I would entertain a motion to excuse Councilwoman Montgomery from this item.
So moved.
Second. Motion second to excuse Councilwoman Montgomery. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, that's unanimous. And now, is there a motion on this item?
I move for approval of the Community Development Program proposal.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, that is unanimous. Item three.
Item G-3, resolution authorizing transfer of continuum of care of homelessness grants, acceptance of grant funds, and execution of agreements. Finance Committee recommended this item with three in favor, none opposed, and one excused.
I would again entertain a motion to excuse Councilwoman Montgomery.
So moved.
Second. Motion second to excuse Councilwoman Montgomery. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, that's unanimous. Councilwoman Montgomery, you're excused. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve this item. Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous with Councilwoman Montgomery being excused. And you want to make a comment of the reason you are excused?
Yeah, the city attorney, if you would, always in terms of items that have to be excused on, I take the matter of voting as an elected official very serious. Because of my role as Executive Director at Bethesda Center, in which these grants allocate funds to, as a part of my waiver by HUD, I must be excused from any votes on those items.
Thank you, Councilwoman Montgomery. Item number four.
Item G-4, consideration of city council's meeting schedule.
Councilmembers, you see that we're suggesting a special meeting on May 6 to begin a discussion of workforce analysis, and would entertain a moment, a motion to approve a new meeting schedule.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, excuse me, Councilwoman Clark?
I'm going to be out of town that week. If there's any way I could get a copy of what y'all, if it's presented, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. All right. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, that's unanimous. And now, G-5.
Item G-5, public comment period.
This is a time once per month that the city council encourages individuals to address it on matters that are germane to city government. We set aside 30 minutes of the evening, and we ask individuals to come forward, give your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. We have a number of people who signed up tonight, so I would encourage you to be as brief as possible, so that everyone have an opportunity to speak. First person, Chris Gridley, I'm sorry, I can't read the last name.
Chris. They're coming.
Following that is Van Snick, I think is next.
Hi, I'm Chris Gitry, 601 South Church Street, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27101. Good evening, Mayor Joins and other distinguished members of the Winston-Salem City Council. My name is Chris, and I'm a third-year student at Salem College. I identify as gender fluid, and I stand with Councilmember Bessie and his resolution. I thank you for doing the same in passing this resolution for our community. In Galatians 5, Chapter 5, verse 44 through 45, the Bible says, "But I say to you, love your enemies and pray for those who persecute you, so that you may be children of your Father in heaven; for he makes his sun rise on the evil and on the good, and sends rain on the righteous and on the unrighteous." This past week especially, tensions have increased between my family and I. I do not feel like, I do not feel like speaking to them at this point will help. We haven't spoken in five weeks. They have resorted to saying hurtful things to me through Facebook. I, along with countless others who stand with me in Winston, see that they do not see the emergence of my gender nonconformity, but rather see it as something to ridicule and just a phase to pass. Therefore, I start my statement with my public response to the slide comments on Facebook. My name is Chris. It isn't short for anything. It's just Chris. My birth name is not my name. Stop calling me that. Sure, I'll correct you, but I've been correcting you every day for a year. Frankly, it's getting old. Call me Chris as a sign of respect. Do you respect me? Calling me by my birth name hurts me deeply. Try to sympathize and call me Chris. Is it really that hard? It's frustrating, this whole name change thing. Call me Chris. Don't use female pronouns when talking to or about me. Just call me Chris. So do you respect me? Do you? If you call me, if you do, call me Chris. However, if you don't, that's okay, too. Just know if you don't respect me enough to use my preferred pronouns or my preferred name, I prefer not to speak to you. Call me Chris, or just walk away. I, along with countless others of the LGBTQIA community and their supporters, thank you for passing Councilmember Bessie's resolution. I thank you for standing up in the name of social justice, and I thank you for standing in solidarity with our community. Thank you for sending a message to Governor McCrory in Raleigh that we in Winston-Salem will not stand by while he attempts to erase several decades of civil rights. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Char Vars, please.
Hey, so my name is Char Van Skank. I go to Wake Forest University. I'm a permanent resident at 1137 Brooks Lane, Virginia Beach, Virginia, 23464. Nobody came before me this time saying some bad things, so you get to hear what I actually would like to say. And first, obviously, thank you for your stand against what I think a lot of people behind me can agree is an injustice. What I would like to say, though, more importantly, is that bathroom discrimination is really nothing new for a lot of trans people. It didn't just magically pop up on that special assembly night when a bunch of Republicans voted against our humanity. It's been around for a while. So a piece of legislation is effectively not going to erase what has occurred. Therefore, what we need to do now is start building forward, start moving forward from here to create and enact social change that allows trans people not only to exist within public spaces on an official level, but in daily interactions that are not always codified by the law. So I think that this is more, it's a place where we can start and build forward, and I am more than happy to do that with all of you as we move forward. I'm going to be here for about three more years, if that, probably some more, so we'll see. Thank you.
Richard Gabero?
Hello, my name is Richard Caban Cabero. I live at 4583 Green Manor Drive. I'm pretty proud of you all. You took a stand. You stood for justice. You worked with us, and we did it. We're happy that the city council passed this resolution tonight in solidarity with the LGBTQ communities in Winston-Salem and the greater state of North Carolina. Passing this resolution is the foundation, as Char said, of building an ongoing relationship between the city of Winston-Salem, local LGBTQ communities, and Winston-Salem's LGBTQ-serving organizations. Prior to HB2, Winston-Salem had no anti-discrimination protections in place for LGBTQ people aside from public employment. And now that the city council has taken a stance against HB2, such anti-discrimination ordinances can be presented and worked on, as we work to become an example of protection and inclusion for all people in this city. It is a hope that we can continue to work forward on that path in solidarity with other issues such as sidewalks, as was presented at our last city council meeting, raising the minimum wage, making sure all districts have libraries, continued development efforts for consistently underserved communities, and, as Councilperson Burke said, continued efforts for equal protections for women, among other matters. So before I step down, I'll leave you with a Bible verse as well, in Psalm 133:1, "How good and pleasant it is when God's people live together in unity." Thank you.
Thank you. Dani Betanaz?
Hello, I live at 1109 Polo Road, Winston-Salem City. I'm a Wake Forest University student. I've been spoken here before. I don't have anything prepared, so I apologize for mumbling if I do. But thank you. Thank you for those who voted to pass this resolution. It really does matter. And I'm one example. I'm transgender. I'm genderqueer. I do not identify as a man or a woman, and I know that can be confusing. And that's confusing to me as well. It was growing up Catholic, growing up in a Mexican household. I did not feel right, for some reason, and I can't understand, I can't explain it. And once I found out what transgender meant, I, my life changed. And I think my friend Char mentioned this in one meeting before, that when they looked into the mirror for the first time, and they really saw themselves, that's the closest they ever felt to God. And that was the same for me. That's the same for a lot of Christian transgender people. When I came out, it was really hard to deal with my religion as a Catholic person, and with my gender and with my sexuality. It took a very long time to realize that there was nothing wrong with me. And actually, the first time I went to the LGBT center at Wake Forest University, there were a lot of Christian LGBTQ people in there, talking about the Bible and talking about all these things. I'm like, wow, I did not know there were other Christian LGBTQ people. That gave me hope. And I can tell you that there was a period of time where I wanted to commit suicide, and was waking up almost every single day immediately wanting to die. And I made it through that period. And what made me get through that was that... And I made it through that period, and what made me get through that was that I thought about all the transgender people out there, all those trans youths who don't know who they are, who think they're wrong, who are told that their bodies are disgusting, that they don't belong in this world. I thought about all of them, and I told myself that I'll fight till death, if it takes death, to make it better for the transgender community. So it really does matter that people stand up for the transgender community, and I want to thank you all for passing their resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. David Bathory. Dr. David Bathory. Liam Hooper. Claire Stone.
A bit of a change in topic. Claire Stone, four nine one five Kenview Street.
Was that Greensboro?
In Greensboro, yeah, I'm sorry. Where's the time?
It should be on the.
On the podium.
On the podium?
There should be a number.
Oh, thank you very much. I'm sorry. I got covered. We're here tonight to talk about WISTA's response to federal transit administration compliance review in February of twenty sixteen, and I brought a handout to you guys in advance. The city of Winston-Salem is responsible for monitoring services provided by its bus contractor, TransDev, in order to ensure compliance with the DOT ADA regulations. That was stated in the compliance review. For years, riders have brought written complaints to WISTA staff and WISTA board, including the FTA findings of violations in twenty thirteen. And this body was also given those findings, and the second FTA complaint, and the compliance review report. In addition, we've communicated with individual city council, city and city staff over the years. In an attempt to comply with the FTA report, WISTA printed a new rider guide for TransAid and held public meetings on April seventh. There were several problems with WISTA's response. It's as if the same staff who did not understand the law originally, or did not understand FTA corrections in twenty thirteen, went behind closed doors and came up with these policy changes. We have a suggestion. It's possible for you to call your contractor, TransDev, to bring in a consultant to address the twenty-three stipulated deficiencies, the use of trapeze software, and your TransAid reservation system. Greensboro and Winston-Salem both use the same contractor, and GTA has brought in TransDev consultants to help address problems in the past. They used to be called Veolia. We made this suggestion to your TransDev staff many times over the years. The city of Winston-Salem pays TransDev a lot of money. Why haven't you called them a corporate and asked them, why is your system not in federal compliance? And to bring you in compliance efficiently, correctly, and immediately. I just wanted to list a couple of them, and they're in the handout. The no-show policy that they wrote was not in compliance with the FTA. The timeframe of reservation still focuses on the requested pickup time, requiring a rider to do calculations to try to understand the pickup window. And WISTA is not emphasizing the negotiations that they were directed to do. It's inconsistent and confusing. When the rider gets off the phone, he or she should have an agreed-to or negotiated thirty-minute pickup window for each trip, and this is how TransDev employees at GTA complete each booking. And you have a handout with that description in your packet. Then the rider and all the staff who communicate with the rider, the reservations dispatched, driver and automated, will all have that same thirty-minute window. Riders who are not ADA but are eligible to apply for ADA dialysis in over sixty should be given the opportunity to do that. And no rider should be taken off of standing order reservations in an attempt to comply with this FTA, especially not dialysis and recurring medical trips. WISTA might write a new policy specifying requirements for obtaining standing order reservations and begin a waiting list for new standing orders. You may need to rent extra vans, but when you know what changes need to be made, please reach out to stakeholders. We are asking city to fix the problems and other deficiencies efficiently, correctly, and immediately.
I've got your memo, and I passed it along to staff this morning and asked for a detailed response to that.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. And Tanya Wilson.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Aye, good. I have a loud voice. Tanya Wilson, fifty-five fifty-three Wendy Hill Drive, Winston-Salem NC two seven one oh five.
Thank you.
I'm also, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers, men and women. Forgive me for not using the right term. I want to kind of, being a passenger on the TransAid service, it is a very important service. And we are not trying to make it hard, but we do want it to be efficient. It would be great if the contractor, TransDev, communicated with both city of Greensboro and city of Winston, and they could learn from each other. Why does one system work one way and the other work completely opposite? When you look at what's important, we have to get to work, we have to get to volunteer agencies, we have to get to medical appointments, and yes, we need to go shopping. So all of that may not seem like things that we do with a disability, but it is. And it actually affects the income that comes into the city. Many of us own houses. If we can't get to work, and we're late, we can be penalized. What does that happen? That puts us in danger of losing our jobs. If we lose our jobs, what happens to the house payment? Or what happens to the tax bill that comes due every year? You're gonna have some foreclosures. So it hits in the pocketbook, not just the city and county taxes, but we also spend money at the stores, at restaurants. We are a vital part of the community. And I'm not saying you're saying that we're not, but to make the program much more efficient would be great. And I'm gonna summarize with this one part. We have a big community college. We also have universities in this state that could possibly help with some of the issues. I would encourage TransDev and maybe y'all to consider talking with them, setting up projects, seeing if you could write a proposal. Could they do an internship? Could they write a computer program? And I'm saying that with NC State because I know they do that in their computer engineering program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I think it's Dean Clisson, I can't make out the last name. Dean Clisson, C L I S O N. All right, Joanne Allen. You're Dean? Oh, okay, that's good.
Good evening. Joanne Allen, Peel Box two eighty-four, two seven one oh two. I did have a prepared speech today, but I feel I must deviate just a little. First of all, I would like to thank everyone that's here in the audience behind me. You know, it takes a lot to come forward to talk about discrimination. I don't care what it is. Discrimination is just discrimination, period. And one of the things that I would like to discuss tonight with the city council members, as well as with the seventy-five, eighty-so individuals behind me and on the side of me, is this. Is this, first of all, we have to start at the local level. That's the first thing we have to do. Today I heard that, you know, we have to do this and let Raleigh know this, and just get on board, and make sure that everything is right and just and everything, but we have to start at the local level. And what I'm going to do is actually be very inclusive here. And what I mean by that is this. It's great that Mr. Bessie, that you have come up with this resolution, because once again, discrimination is discrimination regardless what form it's in. We also have to understand that, and I think Ms. Burke said it best when she stated, that you have to actually come forward, and I'm summarizing a little bit, and start here, and do things correctly on this level. And I'm gonna go back to something that I stated to you all back in December of twenty fourteen. The point is, is that Winston-Salem is ranked number two in the country for having more poor people living in poverty. Okay? And it's great that we talk about all of this, but let's also be inclusive, that everyone on this city council board, as well as previous boards who were involved, this didn't just happen overnight. It just did not happen overnight. You all were aware of it, and you did absolutely positively nothing. And I'm sorry, but that's a very sore point with me. Okay? So when I hear the city council members stating to the public, oh, we're gonna do what's right, and we're gonna do what's just, I'm going to throw it back in your lap and tell you, start at home first. Start with a priority, and it's not that it's not a priority here in Winston-Salem with the HB two bill. That's a priority too as well. But we have people literally suffering while when you go home, you go home to your home that has electricity. You have a car in your driveway. We deserve more. We deserve better. And all I can say is that every last one of you, including the previous council members, and this is nothing personal.
What time is that, Mr. Allen? If you'd summarize.
My summary is this. Learn to do what's right starting at home first.
Deborah Pankey. Deborah Pankey. Pankey, excuse me, Ms.
I am Deborah Pankey, and I live at fourteen twenty-five Bethlehem Lane. I'm here to speak in support of HB two. I'm disappointed that the city council has chosen to review and reconsider House Bill two. If I were living one hundred years ago, I would truly have faced discrimination. The colored-only bathrooms and water fountains would have been my only option. I did not choose to be born black, but I'm very proud of my heritage. I'm also appalled that some issues, as the dispute over HB two, are compared with the racial prejudice and bigotry that we and other minorities have suffered. We were denied access, but everyone now can use the bathroom that corresponds to their gender. The initial purpose of HB two was to prevent Charlotte from enacting their bathroom bill, which could and would have probably become a city-by-city issue. We already have discrimination laws on the books. Why would we need a bathroom bill? I'm here to support the portion of the bill which says, single-sex, multiple-occupancy bathroom, and changing facilities. How can you even think that allowing males into a female dressing room at school is okay? I did hear Governor McCrory say that they will discuss other portions of the bill, but will not change the original portion that deals with the bathroom issue. I absolutely agree with this stance on this issue. I often hear politicians speak about the will of the people. There was a vote by the majority of the people of North Carolina which would identify marriage between one man and one woman. The people voted, but the courts overturned our will. Was there an outcry from our leaders? No. But now, it seems that money is the true driving force behind the HB two issue. If businesses choose to leave our state or refuse to bring their business here, so be it. There are more businesses that support HB two than oppose it, and they should speak out. Opposers once again want to bully those of us whose opinions and beliefs rival theirs. We also have rights. Councilman Montgomery, I listened to your statements at the March meeting. I wondered if you were forced to change your church policies, or limited in the sermon text you could choose on Sunday mornings, would you recognize the ultimate reasoning for bills such as HB two? We are on a slippery slope, and it seems the Christian community, and/or those with conservative values and morals of any sort, are always on the short end of the stick. It is not about hate. It never has been. Why are we judged as haters and discriminators when we want to preserve common decency and privacy? It seems as though it's never enough. This crosses a line, and we cannot be silent. Mark my words, it will never be enough. I wholeheartedly support HB two. Thank you.
Will Knott.
Hello, my name is Will Knott. My address is two four two Springdale Avenue. And I'd like to thank the mayor, Ms. Mayor Pro Tim, and the rest of the council people for allowing, first of all, us to have a public comment period. It's back to what I've heard many of you say, let us know what's on your mind. I'd also like to thank you for the budgeting that I know you're all fighting right now, and I know that's not easy, and I appreciate the efforts that y'all made. But most of all this evening, I'd like to thank you, the city council, and the city as a whole for supporting preservation. This city needs to keep the fabric that it's got, and yet progress ahead. And I think that this city has done a pretty good job of doing that. I'd like to thank y'all for supporting your Historic Resources Commission staff, and I know that's a shared cost with the county. That is a very small staff, and yet they're very, very active, and that's well-spent money. One of the items that they have put out is they have, it's over twelve, I don't know, I don't remember the exact number, events coming up during the month of May. And when you look at that, twelve days over the month of May is a lot of work to put together events for preservation. I hope that all of y'all can get to at least one, and maybe more. There are always good events. And again, thank you much. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Ms. Knott. Thank you. I guess Emick Van Louven.
Hello. My name is Eric Van Louven. I live at twenty-three thirty-five Salem Court, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, two seven one oh three. I come to you today, I had a prepared speech for the HB two, and I'm actually overjoyed that you guys passed the ordinance against it. But I'm still a concerned youth in the community, obviously, because just sending the bill back to them and kind of symbolically denying it doesn't exactly take everything away. I'm a concerned youth of the community. I come to you as an openly gay male of the community, and a young transgender male as a community. And I know where I stand. I look like any normal white guy, so obviously I have the passing privilege not to use my voice to speak out because this bill is a direct attack on trans women, trans youth, trans children in general, especially trans people of color. And we're talking about poverty and stuff, but the poverty rates of trans people is actually four times the amount of our cisgender counterparts. And I feel like that's something that also needs to be addressed. If poverty is such a big issue in Winston-Salem, we also need to address it for transgender people. I really appreciate the fact that you're opposing the bill, but sometimes it's not enough to be saying you're open just, and also saying you're open and opposing it, but you have to be welcoming and affirming as well to your transgender citizens. And I just want to thank, your symbolically repealing HB two has made this a safer community for transgender youth, women, people of color, and those among those living in poverty. And as a side note, the statistics I referenced can be found in the transgender discrimination survey online. Thank you.
Thank you. Bobby Mcmarron.
I'm Bob McManon, four eight four seven Germantown Road in Winston-Salem. Mayor Joins, councilmembers, Mr. Garrity. I have concerns regarding the great loss that we, the city and her utilities division, are suffering in a petition, your wisdom, your guidance, and your assistance. I've been employed at Elige for twenty-one years. I'm a plant senior operator. I hold a grade four wastewater certification. The city and the state require plant operators to acquire certification. To do so, an operator must attend an out-of-town wastewater school, obtain experience, and pass a grade one exam. Afterward, additional experience and training allows the operator to set for grade two exam. That is the minimum requirement that we have for maintaining employment with our utilities plants. In addition, many of our operators will attend additional training, go through additional school, and set for grade three and grade four exams. Each exam requires months of on-the-job training. Elige is a great training ground. Many of our operators have earned grade four certification there at Elige, requiring years of experience, training, and service. The city has a sizable investment of time, money, energy in a certified operator. The last time I had the pleasure of spending time with you, you were recognizing my one team for averting a disaster that was occurred, that could have occurred after a lightning strike at Elige. Many of the folks that were there with me that day, who protected the city, are no longer with the city. The most recent operator that achieved a grade four certification has left the city's utility division and is employed in another wastewater facility. Over the term of my tenure, we've trained operators who have left to serve at Swansboro, Durham, Charlotte, even as far away as California. A fact, in the last seven months, we've replaced twenty-five percent of our operators at the Elige plant. So what we have is this recurring scenario of training again and again, yet again. So what we have is this recurring scenario of training again and again, yet again. One thing I most admire about municipal wastewater plants is that we share with each other. We share information, technologies, process ideas, a common goal to protect our environment and our community. However, in sharing, I ask you, shouldn't we be asking ourselves, do we want to give away our trained operators to other municipals, municipalities? I've heard it said repeatedly with operators leaving, "I can't afford to stay with Winston-Salem."
Mr. Mcmarran, could you summarize? Your time is up.
I thank you for your time. I greatly appreciate this opportunity to speak with you, and I pray for wisdom for the members of the city council as you consider these things.
Thank you, Mr. Mcmarran.
Bless you.
City council, the time is up for public comment, but I'd like to, we have a number of our good folks from our Utilities Commission, I'd love to give them opportunity to speak, if that's okay, with no objection.
No objection.
Just a comment going forward, knowing what we're probably going to hear. Mr. Garrity, Mr. Turner, could you prepare basically the same information and HR with what we received from our other employees concerning disparities of different municipalities of side-by-side, okay, of job classifications and that sort of thing? Can we do that?
Yes, we can. It's not unique to utilities, it cuts across all of our departments, but we'll bring you the information.
Correct. Thank you.
Edgar Henderson, please.
Good evening, I'm Edgar Henderson.
Good evening.
Of 1131 Red Sage Road. I've worked for the city of Winston-Salem Utilities for a number of years now. I came tonight because I, along with my coworkers, feel that a pay-scale evaluation is in order. There are many reasons we feel this action is deserved. Our reason is the level of certificates personnel are required to have in order to run and maintain our utility service. These certifications are numerous and can take as long as four years to earn. By the time an employee earns these certificates, the city has invested approximately $140,000 in him or her, only having them accept a position at a neighboring utility for a significant pay increase. The pay rate deficit compared to other municipalities in North Carolina runs between 15% and 25%, depending on the position. This has a profound effect on employer retention, which leads to lack of field experience. The lack of experience can have devastating consequences for the community as a whole, as we've seen recently in Flint, Michigan. I believe that a more proper pay scale would lessen turnover, leading to a more experienced staff. Thank the council for their time, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak on our behalf. I would like to leave the council with a quote from firefighter David Pollard. "The Utilities Department is a vital part of the overall success of Winston-Salem Fire Department. The Fire Department relies on Utilities to maintain its most important firefighting tool, the water supply. Without Utilities, the Fire Department would not be able to effectively do what you do." The Fire Department gets called out when there is a water main break causing disruption in water service, but the Utilities Department is the department prompt to respond with proper equipment to fix the problem. The Fire Department works with the Utilities to keep a constant check on hydrants throughout the city. Anytime a problem is found, it is reported to Utilities for repair. Utilities, I'm sorry, is also instrumental in keeping up and repairing problems with the fire stations, as well as other city buildings. Once again, that's a quote from David Pollard, the president of Winston-Salem Professional Firefighters. I appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you. Aaron Wissenhun.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Aaron Wissenhun. I currently reside on Morning Star Lane, and I have approximately 10 years currently invested with the City of Winston-Salem Utilities Construction and Maintenance. My coworkers and I are here tonight to ask city council to reevaluate the pay rates and pay scales used by the city in relation to the Utilities Department. The service we provide as a water utility is essential for the social and economic growth of our community. A typical single-family home in the U.S. uses 69.5 gallons of water every single day. This statistic alone is a testament to how imperative our services are. No city or town is sustainable without access to safe drinking water and an effective sewer sanitation system. Lack of an adequate water and sewer system in a community leads to health concerns such as malaria and cholera. At Construction and Maintenance, our job can be extremely taxing at times. Variables we deal with include extreme weather conditions, long work hours, and many hazards associated with our profession. The weather takes a toll on us primarily in the winter months. Due to the nature of what we do, the more extreme the weather is, the more likely we are to be outside in it. The men and women of Construction and Maintenance battle sub-freezing temperatures for hours at a time. On frequent occasions, we are pulled away from our loved ones on a regular basis for as many as 24 hours at a time. This includes weekends as well as holidays. The hazards associated with our line of work are numerous. Those hazards include working on high-pressure water lines while under pressure, being exposed to blood-borne pathogens while working around sewer, excavating in extremely close proximity to natural gas pipes, as well as buried high-voltage power lines, and working close to and in the path of traffic on high-volume roads. The amount of training that goes into creating an effective utility employee can match that of many high-skill professions. It takes anywhere from six months to a year of training and experience for a new employee to become proficient. Just as with any other profession, there is a constant learning curve. There are many state and national certifications involved with our line of work. Earning these certificates requires as many contact hours as some college degrees. Having this level of education leads to a utility staff who is very knowledgeable and professional. In conclusion, I would like to say that the City of Winston-Salem has a hard-working, dedicated group of individuals, individuals, working in utilities. I am proud to be associated with these folks, and I firmly believe they deserve a just compensation for their efforts. This includes ground-level personnel, as well as those in supervisory positions. I'd like to thank the council for their consideration in this matter, and I'd like to thank all Construction and Maintenance Supervision for their guidance and their leadership.
Thank you.
My name is Christopher Sykes, 5800 Kenny Road, Lewisville. I've been with the City of Winston roughly two years, a little over two years, in the Maintenance and Utilities Division, about 16 years in plumbing and construction. Me and my coworkers are here tonight to ask the city council to reevaluate the pay rate and pay scale used by the city in relation to the Utilities Department. We ensure the upkeep of approximately 2,267-plus miles of water mains and approximately 700... I'm sorry, 1,750-plus miles of sewer mains. That's all over the city, stretching even outside the county, not to mention the individual connections, and these depths are ranging anywhere from a foot to 20-foot-plus. Typically, the public perception of us is good due to the fact that we are out at night, weekends, holidays, repairing emergency cases, when most people are home with their families. When we're given a pay raise, our insurance premiums increase. Other cities offer paid health insurance for employees only, and in addition, offer vision insurance, which is not offered by the City of Winston at this time. Also, in addition, other cities and counties offer matching 401K retirement plans. The City of Charlotte Mecklenburg County offers 5% match, and there are 457 plans and 401K plans, which is available to full-time and part-time employees. City council members, I would like you to take a look at the employees, the men and women, who are out there all hours of the night, weekends, holidays, nights, ensuring the water and your sewer is running and is safe. Let's make Winston-Salem and America great again. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Roberts. It's Joe Roberts here.
My name is Joseph Roberts. I live at 4206 Garden Street, Winston-Salem, North Carolina. I've been employed with the City of Winston-Salem for approximately 16 years. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council, good evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
I would like to speak about some of the demands of our job. One of the most demanding aspects of our job is our on-call rotation. We refer to this as being on duty. While we're on duty, we're on-call 24 hours a day for seven days a week. Sometimes this can stretch out to 10 days, depending on how a holiday falls during the week. We're on duty once every eight to 10 weeks due to our 17% vacancy rate. There are times when duty requires us to be at work 18 to 24 hours at a time. Also, our responsibility span the entire county, crossing all municipal borders. In addition to being on duty, there are frequent times when day shift personnel stay to work second shift because the manpower is needed. This puts them working 16-hour days, sometimes for five days straight. We believe improved employee retention will go a long way towards alleviating these concerns. Many of us have worked here for decades. We have stuck with the city through hard times, showing patience and understanding of how the economy was restricting the city council's financial options. We stayed with the city out of loyalty and dedication, out of a sense of responsibility to our community, and out of pride for what we do. There have been other job opportunities in the past for most of us. We turned them down because we know what we do is of the utmost importance. I feel it is time for the men and women of Utilities to be recognized for their dedication. I thank the council for their time and attention, and thank you to the employees who came out tonight and support.
Thank you. Good evening.
City councilman, Mr. Mayor. My name is Dean Raper. I live at 1,001 Garing Drive, Kearnsville, North Carolina 27284. I just want to agree with my fellow employees in what they say. And I just want to say, I've got a few of my own viewpoints. I think that the job descriptions are too generalized across different departments. For instance, a crew leader for our department, Utilities Construction Maintenance, working in sewer every day, is paid the same as a crew leader in Parks and Rec, and their responsibilities are very different. The pay should not reflect the job title, but the responsibilities for the job. Employees that have higher-risk jobs should be getting paid more than those with lower-risk jobs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Certainly, I think I speak on behalf of the city council and thank the members of Utilities staff for being here tonight. We are extraordinarily proud of our water and sewer system here in Winston-Salem Utilities. We're the envy of most of the other cities in the state, if not the southeast, and it's due to the hard work that you all do every day. I think about you on those very freezing nights, and I've seen the crews out there at night and getting that water back on, so we thank you. I think more importantly, we've already begun a discussion with the budget process already, looking at the disparities in some of the areas there, so I'll kind of assure you that we will take your comments very, very seriously, and we'll hope to begin to address those with the budget this year. So again, thank you all for coming, and I'll close the public comment period at this point. Council members, Councilman Clark.
Yeah, I just had a few questions or comments following that. Lee, we do have a meeting on May 6th at Winston about this. Are you going to cover specifically Utilities, or are you going to do other things?
May 6th.
Yeah, we just voted for it.
That's a different...
That's a different subject. That's the National Resource Network that's working on a labor analysis for us, so...
Oh, okay, I assumed labor analysis meant...
We will cover all this with the Finance Committee and the budget. We'll send some preliminary stuff out as well.
I would say it's helpful for me to get vacancy or slots that are unfilled, as well as turnover, would be helpful. And also, I think it'd be helpful to get, at least keep the Utilities Commission in the loop, since they are charged with running the Utilities area. And the last one, just to correct someone, that someone said the council did not vote an ordinance tonight. Mr. Bessie's resolution is simply a piece of paper that will be mailed to Raleigh, and we pass a lot of resolutions, but that's what it is. There was no ordinance tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be very brief. I just want to take a moment and thank all of the men and women who came out today and spoke, whether it be from the Utilities employees to everyone on both sides of HB2. I'm very passionate about what I do. I mean, I signed up in 2009 to do this, not because I wanted you to call my name or sit up here and look at me from this deus, but I take what I do very, very seriously, being a native son of this city. The toughest thing to do is to be quiet and listen to how passionate you are about how you feel. I have to sit here and take that and be quiet, but I've listened, I've heard each of you loud and clear. Some of the things we won't be able to go back and talk about, some of the things we will. I promise to do my best to continue these conversations and do what's right. And anybody who knows me, anybody who's ever called me, I've talked to a number of the Utilities employees, I'm a man of my word, when I give it, I keep it. We'll be doing what we're supposed to do. Thank you.
Councilman Montgomery.
Yes, a couple of comments. One, we discussed a lot of our agenda tonight was very short. There was a lot that's been discussed, and a lot that has been taken up on tonight's agenda, whether it's been dealing with issues of making sure that there is adequate housing in different parts of our community, making investments, whether it's discussions that have been brought to us about how our transportation system works, discussion about issues around equity, around gender and gender equality, then the conversation around pay and pay quality for employees. And I say all that to say that, again, when it comes to local government and the issues that have been brought tonight, the difference is, is that there's nobody else for us to pass the buck to, that we actually have to deal with the realness of the issues that have been brought to us, and having to approach those from a way in which benefits the public, who are all of you who are here today, and those who are watching on television. And I say all of that to say, when we step back and we look at any issues that we've discussed tonight, I think the biggest piece around local government is the fact that you actually get to have real dialogue and meaningful dialogue about issues, and the thing about it is, is that we have to be able to be willing to listen to both sides of it, and then make a decision that's in the best interest of the people. And sometimes it's not easy, but it has to be done in terms of being able to get to that place. I will say one thing, and I don't know who I should look at from the Police Department now, but when we had the conversation around police pay, I said when they left the meeting, I said, "I hope you all go and talk to other parts of city government, because I know that there's the same issue that we have in other parts of city government." And that does not detract anything from police and what we did in terms of trying to find equity for police. But as I mentioned then, that I found it kind of upsetting in the sense of the scale of things, that when we made that decision for the Police Department, how that would make other individuals within city government feel, understanding that they had some of the same issues, and that it would have made more sense for us to have waited until dealing with this for the full budget, to make adjustments for everyone across the board, understanding that the issues that the Police Department was having with turnover and those kind of things, don't take anything away from it. I voted for it, so I have to take the fact that I supported that and voted for it to move it forward, because I believed in it, but it did not take away the fact that we have issues across the entire city government that we have to take care of. And I kind of call it the Walmart effect. It's the fact that we want to make sure that we have this low level of taxes and fees for a community, and that's why you get to go and shop at Walmart, because they have cheap prices. But the fact of the matter is, that we've seen is that that's bent off of the backs of not paying for what it is that they get. And I think as a community, we have to pay for what it is that we receive. We receive quality service every day from people like you, who do the work each and every day. And when I tell people about city government, why it's important, there's four areas that I pull out often, that the entire community would go up in arms if those things stopped. That's our Fire Department, our Police Department, our Water and Sanitation individuals, because if those things stop, if you cut on the faucet and there was no water, if you flush the toilet and it didn't go as it's supposed to go, if you called the police and nobody showed up, and if you called the Fire Department, that's what local government is all about.
Thank you. Councilman Burke.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, on a regular basis, I have spoken to the city manager about the morale of the employees. And they're not here for us to thank them with words. They're here for us to get real and thank them so that their pocketbooks will look different. Because I could not see, and I was Public Safety Chair for 36 years, I gave it up to Mr. over there because, by choice, but I still watched the Police Department, I watched the Fire Department, and I said to the city manager, "Oh, employees are important." And on a regular basis, I asked him, "How are we doing?" And I think the city employees have... And I think the city employees have done an excellent job in staying and maintaining your dignity as you come and go to take care of us on a regular basis. I'm not going to say thank you. I'm going to want to show you.
I hope you know, and I, I just have to know you know, we all hear you, and we care about your, your quality of life, because that's what the money affects, is your quality of life, whether it's your family, your home, all of the things that you'd like to have outside of the job. Again, as you've heard us say even prior with the other two departments, again, you've heard tonight some of the statements, we didn't get here to this point overnight. This is not going to be, we've looked at some numbers recently across the board, and it's not going to be a quick, easy fix moving forward. I mean, even the police, public safety, they didn't, you know, everybody's got a wish list. I got that. I used to have one when I was working. But if the money's not there, I'm a realist, but all of you know that too. If the money's not there, we can tell you we're going to do everything you want us to, but if the money's not there, and that's where we are kind of, is like, we know we have this monumental task in front of us that we have got to begin the process of trying to correct, but it's going to take time, and we're going to try to do it in pieces like a process, because that's what we have to do. Now, are we going to go forward without asking, as you here tonight, to show us your input as to maybe how you think we can get this done? It's not easy. It's not like writing a check and saying, go give everybody a raise and bring them up to this level and make sure we outdo Greensboro, High Point, and everybody to steal everybody. Because even what we deal with public safety, that's not going to stop people from leaving us, because the other towns are going to say, well, we'll give you a $3,000 bonus if you come over here right now, and we'll match what you already making. There's a constant revolving door that we all in right now, trying to keep those people with us who, yes, we've invested in and trained and, and all of that, but I can tell you, just like we've said, we are looking into it, the budget meetings, conversations that are coming up, a large part of that would be about that. And as Councilman Montgomery said, and I've said, and some of us for years since I got on this council, you can't brag about paying the lowest taxes out of the five or six major cities in North Carolina when your employees are not being compensated accordingly. I've worked in manufacturing for over 38 years. I keep telling people, if you can't compensate your people that help make your brand and your product the, what it is, then you, you're not going to be around long. They go belly up. So, you know, it's important for us to understand that we're going to have to look at some hard decisions. Again, with me, I don't have a problem saying we're going to have to look at taxes, and I know most of this council will tell you, that's not where they want to go. Well, I'm a business person too. You eventually got to get the taxes in line with the services and the qualities that we give our citizens and constituents, and we haven't really done that. We pride it ourselves on saying we got low taxes. But I can tell you, and I can promise you this, as always, I will do whatever I can because I understand what it's like not to be duly compensated for what I do. So, that's my.
Councilman Bessie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to add my thanks to everybody who took their time to come out this evening. I know that you were probably having a full day's work today and have one tomorrow, and you're still here tonight, so thank you. Kind of to take off on what Councilman Montgomery mentioned, that's the difference between local government and sometimes what happens at the other levels. We have the privilege of hearing directly from it. You can come into the room here in your city where you live and speak to us, and we appreciate that. And we're going to be dealing with the real issues that you bring to us, not some divide-and-conquer nonsense that gets dreamed up in a political backroom. As others of my colleagues have said, we can't do everything at once, but the fact that we can't do everything at once and all that we'd like to do doesn't excuse us from doing as much as we can with what we can put together.
Right.
And that includes particularly looking at the areas where our staff is severely underpaid. We have asked staff for specific reports on that. They've been bringing those forward. They will continue to do that, and we will do the best we can this year for those of you, and there are many, who are working your heads off for Winston-Salem, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilman McCall.
I do think senior staff especially is under a lot of pressure from, from both sides of this equation. On the one side, they've got taxpayers saying, let's keep our taxes low. On the other side, they've got employees who are doing hard work and saying, I want to be justly compensated. And I think you've done a very good job, especially through the downturn, where we were able to keep our AAA bond ratings and still keep the city functioning and a, and a high quality of service. I don't think anybody would, would say that we don't provide a high quality of service. So, but as we said, as I said during the discussion about fire and police pay raises, there's a real cost to losing personnel, especially qualified, highly-trained personnel. And that's, that's a real cost. That's, that's a real dollars and cents cost, and it's also a psychic cost. When you have people leaving, it affects morale, which in effect, affects everybody around them. So I think there's a, there's a real cost we need to look at there, and I do, I do think we need to stop being quite so proud of being the lowest-cost city to live in, in the state amongst the big cities. There's a real cost to taxpayers, but there's also a real cost to our employees. I think Henry Ford was pretty smart when he figured out if he was going to have his employees buy his, buy his cars, he would have to pay them a little bit more money. I think we're at that stage. Thank you.
Thank you. Entertainer motion to adjourn. Motion second to adjourn. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? No. We adjourn.